It's eight thirty Wednesday, April thirtieth. We call the Franklin County Commission meeting, the board, please.
Mr. Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Waymare?
Present.
Chair Harris?
Present.
Vice Chair Metter?
Present.
And Commissioner Dickinson.
I have to leave.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, blessed and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's really over.
All right. Read the pro-
Yeah, I'm reading the proclamation. Teresa didn't hear yet, so.
I just go ahead and read it then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
We can still have the talk.
Okay. Proclamation twenty-five dash zero four. Whereas, community action has made essential contributions in individuals and families across the na- across this nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities. And whereas, community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in ninety-nine percent of all American counties. And whereas, community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas, community action promotes community-wide solutions to challenges throughout our cities, suburbs, and rural areas. And whereas, community action delivers innovative services and supports that create greater opportunities for families and children to succeed. And whereas, community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. And whereas, community action is celebrating fifty-nine years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for Americans. Now, therefore, the Franklin County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-five as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of all Franklin County community action agencies. All right.
Okay. Comes in, we'll call her up.
About to accept it or approve?
Oh, yeah.
Special resignation?
Okay.
Do we make a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, we'll make a motion that we pass the resignation or proclamation?
I'll second it.
Mr. Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymare?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
And Chair Harris?
Yes. Public comment?
Norman Woogie.
Good morning. My name is Norman Woogie, thirty-seven Ninety Pony Road, Ottawa, Kansas. I want to thank the commission for allowing me to speak. I meet with a lot of them, interesting people every week. Some at the library, persons at the library started when I asked where he worked. He said he was retired and he had worked at the Wolf Creek Nuclear Generation Plant near Burlington, Kansas, and now lives in Ottawa, Kansas. He said Wolf Creek has a capacity to produce many megawatts. In my research, there are various options of generating electricity. Lake and river turbines, coal-burning generators, solar panels, windmills, and of course, nuclear generators. The solar panels and windmills are a threat to our environment. Fiber glass particles get into the air, generating grazing problems with horses and make them sick. Some get into the air. The windmills will wear out and will be abandoned and eventually falling over. The windmills are notorious for leaking oil in their operation, and the oil has to be changed routinely with many gallons of oil. The windmills and solar panels cluster our environment when installed industrially. Technology has improved over the years to filter contaminants and scrub stacks that at one time were very dirty. Wolf Creek has been in operation for many years. The gentleman started that he would, it would take three to four billion dollars in today's dollars to construct another nuclear plant. It is probably a valid option to provide us with, to fill our appetite for electricity. In our time, we will realize there are better choices. It's not just our problem, it's worldwide. One of the problems, the landfills refuse to take damaged windmill blades. It's not an option to recycle, cycle the windmill blades, so they accumulate by the tons. We know that we need to make changes. We need to be careful not to dump our problems on our next generations. In my travels, I see windmill fields and farmers who sell out for the love of money. In my last presentation, a story was told how people are upset with neighbors against neighbors. In my presentation, story that I told was how set neighbors were against neighbors. In the past presentation, a quote, "The windmills are like pimples on the face of Kansas." I see them now as an infection to everyone worldwide. I know that the solution is, we might stumble, but hopefully don't fall. I guess we need to look back in history and see what worked. Maybe another Wolf cause, Wolf Creek style would work. Wolf Creek seems to be an operating pretty clean and doesn't destroy the beauty of Kansas. Thank you.
On the consent agenda, consider approval of the meeting minutes for April sixteenth. Consider approval of claim vouchers and tax change orders, nineteen thousand, fifty-nine dollars, fifty-three cents, and payroll, March twenty-first to April twentieth, is a million, four hundred and forty, nine hundred and fifty-six, and eight cents.
We approve.
Second. Commissioner Waymare?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yep.
Chair Harris?
Yes. Items of business, discuss EMS quarter twenty-twenty-four.
Hello.
Kristy, hi Kristy.
Hello, how are you?
Good, you?
I am good. So I have the fourth quarter report for the ambulance department that I wanted to share with you today. We ended up with a year for a total of four thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight calls. That's the largest that we have had in the history of Franklin County EMS. You can see that we were up nine hundred and ninety-six calls from the previous year. As far as our revenue goes, we brought in a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-six cents for the quarter. As we had talked the last time I was here, we knew that there was a little glitch with the billing process, so it did leave us a little bit short in revenue for the year. However, I would like to point out that in both March and April, we have exceeded what we needed for budget, so we've gotten things back, back where they need to be. And then, the next thing that I had was our adjustments. And looking at it, I did recycle from a different quarter and forgot to change April, May, and June to October, November, and December, so my apologies for that, that our adjustments were forty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-six cents. Were there any questions about those two?
I'd make a motion to approve the adjustments for the fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymare?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
So going on to the actual report itself, when you're looking at the first page of your spreadsheet, it just runs by day of the week. I haven't found any commonality until I ran this report, and then both Friday was the busiest day of the week in the fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-three. As far as runs by hour of the day, in twenty-twenty-four, we did see a spike in calls starting about one o'clock in the afternoon, and it didn't end until about ten o'clock at night, so that's when we made up our, our majority of our calls. And runs by the county, you can see just an increase in the number of calls. It's reflected in those numbers as well, but a, a pretty big increase in the, the number of calls there that we are running in our districts. Runs by zone, these are broken out into the specific townships, and also we have Ottawa North and Ottawa South, and continuing to notice quite a big disparity between Ottawa North and Ottawa South. I honestly am not sure exactly why, but that is something that appears to start to be a trend, so we're going to be looking into that to see what we can do to help balance that workload, because it really is putting a, an unjust demand on one side of the city in that, in that workload. And you can see that from the picture.
When the call comes in from Ottawa North, you send the ambulance that's from, at the fire station?
We do. So they're divided in, the city is divided into two districts, Ottawa North and Ottawa South, and right now, it's just the increasingly higher demand on that Ottawa South district, and these reports have shown that the disparity just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger every time I do a report. So feel it's time to start investigating as to what's the cause and how to fix it. Our runs by response request, most of our calls do come from nine-one-one calls. There, you're going to notice that there's a significant increase in standbys in twenty-twenty-four, and that's just because we were required to track every standby that we did, those for move-ups for coverage started being, had to be tracked in twenty-twenty-four. Our runs by unit disposition, so seventy-seven percent of our calls in, involved us actually making contact with a patient. You'll see that there, fifteen percent of the calls were non-patient incidents, and those were calls that never had a, a patient associated with them, so for instance, a move-up. And no patient found was five percent, and that means that we went to a call and we just didn't find anybody that was a patient. Happens more often than you'd think. Runs by standby purpose, eighty-four percent of those were just to increase our coverage. And then if we're looking at patient evaluation and care, eighty-one percent of the patients that we saw, we did treat and transport. And then our transport dispositions, this is, encompasses everything, so obviously a standby, we're not going to transport. Overall, fifty-one percent of everything that we did for the year, including standbys, public service events, resulted in us treating and transporting a patient. So you can see that while we're busy with that, we do other things in the community as well, too. And our average run mileage summary looks very close to what it did in twenty-twenty-three. You don't have data for four of those elements there, because in twenty-twenty-three, we weren't required to track that data. And then, we do have our runs by destination name, and I do want to point something out to you on this spreadsheet, because if you're looking at the twenty-twenty-four numbers, it shows we took four hundred and twenty-six patients to North Kansas City Hospital, and that we took forty-one patients to Parkview Heights. That is not correct, but I reported it to you as Image Trend reported it to me, and I am working to get that fixed. They were telling me that there's a bug in the system that was causing our data to, to be off in elements, so they are actively working to get that corrected. I think that probably what it needs to be is it, it, they give me a list of just the, the data elements, and it, for whatever reason, it bumped it down one in those five hospitals, but we're, we are working to get it corrected. I have not noticed it prior to this, and I have not noticed it after I ran this report, but nonetheless, it was there, that's what I was given, so I felt it accurate to give it to you, but give an explanation. Our runtime summary, just in twenty-twenty-four, we did have an increase in our scene times, that's the time that we arrive on the scene to the time that we leave the scene. We want to keep that always twenty minutes or less. In twenty-twenty-four, we did notice that that number started to creep up a little bit more than we were comfortable with, so we, we did some training, did some more education, and our crews did a phenomenal job, and the twenty-twenty-five numbers reflect that they took that seriously, and that scene time is coming down quite nicely. Our runs by service level, this shows, it's a reflection of how the calls were handled, whether it was an ALS or a BLS call. You'll notice in twenty-twenty-four, in the fourth quarter, that we had absolutely no, nothing was billed at the BLS level, everything was billed ALS. Overlapping calls, these are just, again, our move-ups. We did have an increase in move-ups, but ironically, we had a decrease in the times we were at system status, so. And overall, in twenty-twenty-four, for the third quarter, we were in system status, or we had no ambulances available, for point three-one percent of the time, so that was a decrease from the previous year as well. And if anybody has questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions?
Have we ever come to an agreement or worked on the move-up deal?
We are. Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, I think I've got the next one, too.
One more.
All right, we're not done with you. Yeah, that's that one.
All right.
Go ahead.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And this is just the, the annual report from twenty-twenty-four, so it just looks back on the, on the total year. So as I had said, that twenty-twenty-four was our, our busiest year. Twenty-three, in the past five years, twenty-three percent of the calls came out in twenty-twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-four. When you're looking at this, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, that was our year of COVID, that was the least busy that we had, but there was a, a decrease in twenty-twenty-three as well, too. So. Our runs by the day of the week, this is comparing the last five years, and really, there's not a big correlation. You would like to think the weekends are the busiest, but that's not always the case. Runs by hour of the day, again, this just reflects that we've had that bump in calls between about one and, and ten o'clock, that's when we're running the majority of our calls. Runs by county, this is going to reflect what we have done here in our county, but also mutual aid, so in twenty-twenty-four, we did provide mutual aid to Anderson County, Douglas County, Miami County, and Osage, and they reciprocate for us as well if we need them. These are just, again, our zones, and you can see how that disparity between Ottawa North and Ottawa South over time, that that gap between calls is just kind of continuing to get bigger and bigger and bigger. Our runs by location type, I gave you the top ten, because if not, the list was, there was about sixty different places we picked up people, and it got too much to look at. But traditionally, in most cases, we are going to just private houses to treat patients. Then followed by hospitals, nursing homes, you can see apartments are on there as well, too. Streets and highways are another big one, that's for our traffic accidents. Response requests, we did have two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight people that called nine-one-one for us to come and, and evaluate them. We had seven hundred and fourteen inter-facility transfers, and that means a hospital-to-hospital transfer, and we had forty-two medical transports, that would be something that originated in the hospital, but then either went to home, or to hospice, or back to a nursing home, and then again, like we talked earlier, you can see that big bump in standbys on this report as well. Our dispatch reasons, when you look at those, this is just an aggregate, these are the top ten, other than inter-facility transfers, our next biggest thing are falls, or sick people, weren't a lot of falls. Our provider impressions, so this is what's going to happen when we get on scene and we find somebody that's called nine-one-one, what do we find that, that is wrong with them, and you're going to notice that, in a lot of cases, that we go and we find that there's nothing wrong, that's usually because somebody just slipped and fell out of a chair, they had some type of reduced mobility and just needed assistance at that time, but did not meet the medical definition of being a patient. Other things that we deal with quite frequently, head injuries, hip injuries, of course, those are associated with falls, people complaining of abdominal pain, chest pain, cardiac arrhythmia, so their heart's not beating right, COPD with exacerbation, so difficulty breathing is, is one of the ones we go on frequently as well. The primary symptoms that our patients are reporting to us, and for twenty-twenty-four, it looks like the biggest one there was shortness of breath. Then that's going to be very much followed by pain. I found this one really interesting, looking at it by, and it's just looking at trauma calls by cause of injury. Most of them are from falls. We have, in the top ten, we had falls from the same level, falls from slips and trips, falls from the bed, falls from the chair, and you can see the top ten even made falls from the toilet.
Okay.
Our, our runs by patient age, we, we run the, the whole gamut. It was very impressive that in twenty-twenty-four, we had the honor of attending to thirteen patients that were over a hundred years of age. We also took care of twenty-three patients who were less than a year of age. Our most common age demographic that we're taking care of is between seventy and seventy-nine. So our procedures, the absolute one that we did the most in this case in twenty-twenty-four was we did EKG monitoring. So anytime somebody complains of difficulty breathing or chest pain, something that we think the heart may be involved, that's one of the first things we do, is we go and we want to get a good picture and see how their heart's beating, and you can see that that's pretty closely followed by a radio report, and that's because we want to give the hospital an alert that we're coming in and, and what we have coming in, so they can get resources available for the patient. Medications that we administered, in twenty-twenty-four, the, the medicine that we administered the most was oxygen. Then that's going to be followed by saline, and that's just what we would give you if we start an IV and we hang, hang a bag of fluid, that's our saline. You can see fentanyl and morphine for pain is, is in the top ten as well, along with aspirin, that would be, we give it for our chest pain patients, buterol and epitropium bromide, those are in the top ten, those are for our breathing difficulties, and then the epinephrine, one to ten thousand, that's our first-line cardiac drug, so anybody that's in cardiac arrest, we're going to give that medication to them.
Is that the same, like, like EpiPen, epinephrine, or is it different?
So it is different, it's not quite as concentrated, and EpiPens are given through an injection, and the epinephrine, one to ten thousand, is specifically designed to be given through an IV line. That was a great question. This just reflects, again, we've already talked about our transport dispositions, but overall, we did treat and transport a lot of patients. Our average run mileage over the past five years is, is held pretty steady, it's just our scene to destinations increased a little bit in twenty-twenty-four. We do have our top ten hospitals that we transported to, and just in the top three, obviously Advent Health Ottawa is the main place where we're taking our patients, followed by Olathe Medical Center and Advent Health Shawnee Mission, and Advent Health Shawnee Mission and Olathe, those are only off by, by one. We took one more patient to Olathe than we did Advent Shawnee. And then last but not least, we have our runtimes, and I had, overall, as an aggregate for twenty-twenty-four, our average scene time was over twenty-six minutes, and you can see that, that previous to that, this was to us of a concern, we'd like to get our patients and get them off the scene, so that was something that we were able to at least use these reports to directly impact how we run our department and get those scene times down to get better care for our patients. And that was, that's all I have of, kind of a recap of what we did in twenty-twenty-four, but happy to answer questions about that as well.
Thank you very much.
How are your, um, levels as, as far as, are you still, are you fully staffed?
We are fully staffed. We sta- we have one employee right now that is in orientation, and I believe he is off next week, so we're, we, we are fully staffed, knock on wood.
Yeah, awesome, that's awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. On the third item, let's consider approval of rezoning application twenty-four-ten dash zero-zero-two-three. That?
Good morning, Commissioner. Okay, this is probably our most difficult one of the day. It involves three different properties, eighteen ninety-one, nineteen seventeen, and nineteen-thirty-five Montana Road. This is located roughly half a mile south of Ottawa. The applicant is requesting to rezone multiple areas to reshape multiple properties through the use of two boundary line adjustments and one lot split. I'll start at the top, and we'll work our way south along Montana Road. To the north, nineteen thirteen, or, excuse me, nineteen thirty-one Montana Road, which is currently zoned R-three-A, the applicant is requesting to add six-point-six-eight acres to the existing four acres by utilizing a boundary line adjustment. We're going to move the top property line of that four acres to the north, and then that's going to add four acres, roughly approximately four-point-six-eight acres, and then we're going to move the south property line about two acres worth of land, to increase that to a total of ten-point-nine-eight acres. We'll then rezone that individual property to RE. The next move is to come set to the, uh, direct south of that new boundary line and create a thirteen-acre parcel with a one-time lot split. The parcel will then be rezoned to the RE District from the A-one District. All previous splits regarding this, these properties have happened prior to zoning, so in this case, we are allowed to utilize the one-time lot split. The last step would be to reduce the parcel of eighteen ninety-one Montana Road from fourteen-point-seven acres to nine-point-nine, or point-zero-nine. We do not need to change any zoning to that parcel property, because it remains in the RE, but the remaining five-point-nine-seven acres that will be merging onto the property commonly known as eighteen sixty-seven Montana, will then need to be rezoned to the A-one District. We are then merging the fifty-three acres, fifty-three-point-two-two acres east of the newly formed tracks to the existing eighteen sixty-seven Montana to a tract of a final number of two-hundred-and-sixty-four-point-three-eight acres, and that will then be A-one. Rule Water Two has approved a water meter for the new parcel that we utilize the lot split on, and all of the parcels have either septic in place or have room for septic. Both staff and commission, planning commission, recommend approval. I know that's a lot, if you want me to get into the maps, I can.
So each of the houses that are in there now, are they different owners?
Yes.
And they're all just-
And so, the north property owners buying that, that portion of land to add to ten-acre plot, the individual with the, actually, the south house, he, that is the applicant of all this, and then he's trying to sell off the majority of his land, and then we can merge everything together for agricultural use on the large tract.
It really is, I'm selling part of it to a neighbor, and I'm buying part of it from a neighbor, and I am creating one new tract for residency, but otherwise, most of the rest of it's the same. Has it always been just different owners?
Yes, ma'am.
I hear a motion. Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymare?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
And Chair Harris?
Yes. Number four, consider approval of rezoning application twenty-four-twelve dash zero-zero-two-seven.
Okay, this is five-seventeen- Okay, this is 517 Nevada Road, location approximately two miles northeast of Richmond. The applicant would like to rezone five acres enveloping the home site to the RE District in order to sell the home to the tenants who currently reside at that home. The rest of the land will be continued to be leased out for farming. The house has all the required utilities in place. There is no significant discussion, and staff and planning commission both recommend approval.
Any discussion? Do you hear a motion? Motion to approve.
Second?
Commissioner Stotlemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes. Number five, consider approval of rezoning application 2501-0029.
Okay, this is commonly known as 3367 Reno Road, roughly two miles, two and a half miles northeast of Ottawa. The applicant is requesting to rezone 46 acres into two tracts, one being A2 and one being RE. One tract will be approximately 31 acres and would be zoned A2, and the other tract will be 15 acres into the RE District. The applicant has already purchased the rights to a meter through Rule Water 5 for the 15-acre tract, and the 31-acre tract is not required to have water present. Both tracts will be sold on the open market. This property has already been allowed to be split once, so the further splitting will require replat, therefore it will come in front of you once again. Staff and planning commission both also recommend approval of this split.
Any questions for Pat?
We'll be listening to the railroad. Make a motion to approve.
Second?
You're right by us.
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stotlemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Yes. Six, consider the approval of rezoning application 2502-0031.
Okay, commonly known as 780 Iowa Road, roughly four and a half miles southwest of Ottawa. The applicant is requesting to rezone 15 acres out of 195-acre parcel to the RE District. The applicant would like to allow for a family member to construct a home on that 15 acres and maintain the rest of the land for agricultural use. There's currently a water meter already on, excuse me, there's currently a water meter in place on the property. The parcel of 15 acres is large enough for septic, and there's no significant discussion during the planning commission meeting of this, and both staff and planning commission recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve. Second? Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stotlemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes. Consider approval of bid award of Brian Omar Construction on a state bid of $712,453.
Yes.
This road bridge.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. This is basically a formality with the state to approve a contract for a state bid on the Texas Road project. There were, I believe, six bids that came in. Brian Omar Construction was the low bid. I have reached out to several people that have worked with this company, and they seem to be a very reputable contractor.
Have we used them before?
We may have. Okay, yes, yes, we did. So we've.
They've been around a long time. Yeah, looks like they're a good price so they can stay close to home.
Right. They are local, basically, out of Paola. So I'm just asking that we go with the low bid, and this is, again, state funds for the Texas Road Bridge and for $712,5453 so that we can proceed with the process.
Did it come in at what they said it should come in at?
I think they're actually a little lower than what we anticipated, to be honest.
Because one of the discussion things that we, when I heard at the conference last week was, have you done any, have you bid any bridges? Because a lot of them are coming in way more than they have been.
Yeah, I think, again, I think having them local and having worked, again, I think they're, they wanted a competitive bid because they're sleeping in their own beds at night.
These guys did a little bit of work out there on 50 Highway, on the box extensions.
My husband's worked with them.
Any questions? More? Do you hear a motion?
Motion. Second?
Do I need to formally say it here?
I guess not.
Go for it.
I guess, yeah, sure.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we're into staff reports.
Thanks, Rod. Just to piggyback on, on that a little bit, Public Works related, on Monday morning, Paul Bean and I met with Wid O'Briens. As you know, Wid O'Brien has helped us with, they helped us with CARES Act allocations, with ARPA allocations. We met with a gal to discuss grant opportunities for Public Works, and she seemed to indicate that there were various avenues. The one that was most interesting to me actually involved bridges. So I know Jeff and I have had conversations about getting another bridge in the pipeline in terms of, and frankly, we've had those discussions with the five of you about having engineering work done for another one. So that's something we were likely to do anyway, but in light of the fact that we have someone out there that's willing to help work with us, and she seems to think that this administration is going to be favorable towards these types of projects. So just know that we are working on getting money from as many different outlets as we can, so that's all I have. Thanks, Rod.
Does this be federal grant?
It would be, yeah.
Pat? Kristi?
I'm here.
Jamie?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here this morning because I had to get an extension for the personal property notices of value. Those normally go out on May the 1st, and as part of the extension agreement with the property valuation division, I also was required to notify you. The issue at hand is through the conversion to the new software, it delayed our, it delayed our operations off and on through the season, which has pushed us out. And as well, the, we have an extra workload because since they've dropped renditions this year, we had to value all the properties instead of just the properties that had been reported by the valuation date. So we're, we usually send out about 60% of all property valuation notices for personal property in any given year, but now we're sending out 100%. So that also added to the workload. Don't expect it to happen again. With the new system, we're going to be able to start even earlier than we were starting with the old system, so I foresee us being done well within time for the 2026 year.
They dropped renditions. What is that?
Well, when a person owns or a business owns personal property, every year, we would send out a rendition, a list of the property items that they'd have, that they had, and it was to allow them to say, have you added or taken anything away?
Yellow sheets.
Yeah, that's exactly it. It's the yellow sheets. And last year, the state dropped that requirement, and I know some counties went ahead and sent them out to get one last run, but I saved $2,500 in postage.
What's your rate of return on those anyways?
About 60%. Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
I would point out, and this is bigger than the appraiser's office, but it's something I want the five of you to know, and Betsy can attest to this, and Dustin can certainly attest to this, the countywide software upgrade is not done. We don't talk about it anymore, but that is a massive, massive project that is still, like, we are still in the transition phase. Like, we're not even too, you know, learning about it, you know, finding, making efficient use of it. So just know that all of that's happening in the background, and Jamie just provided merely one example of how that transition has affected operations.
And in this process, there are things that have arisen that we didn't even contemplate that needed to be addressed. So, and, but I've, I've been through, this is my, what is it, my fifth data conversion I've been through in, in both banking and with this. And there's nothing out of the ordinary going on, and it's always, it's always a chore, but I've yet to go through one where it wasn't better at the other end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair?
Good morning. I'm going to start by saying thank you once again to the board for your attendance at our annual awards ceremony. That does mean a lot to our, to our people, our staff, that you guys take the time out of a, out of a weekend to come and celebrate some of their accomplishments. So thank you once again for you guys doing that. I also wanted to say we will have someone graduating from the Law Enforcement Academy on Friday, so that will be good to get him back. So, and then he'll be starting in the field training, and then we just have the one vacancy, and we're about ready to get, I think we're getting pretty close to getting, to getting that filled as well. The last thing I have is just another update on, for our inmate count as of this morning, we do have 81 inmates, with 19 of those farmed out. So I'm just kind of aware we're.
Is that 19 included in 81?
Yes, yes, yep. Yep. So, and I'll answer any questions you guys may have for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dustin?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
Just real quick, I want to thank Derek and Paul Monday for taking, I was, I was to attend that meeting Monday, but I, I went and picked up four dump trucks from Wichita with staff, and I really enjoyed the trip back convoying with our lights on, carrying our spreaders and our plows. There are two of them in the parking lot that Buddy and Justin brought, and they'd be more than happy to show them to you, give them your rides if you want. And, and dust control, just real quick, we've, I think we're down to the last four loads, Justin. Justin and Rusty have been knocking that out, so I think they're going to get a couple of them off today. Weather permitting, we should have that done this week. I will talk with Derek this week, and we'll get some chips he'll put in front of you guys to talk about in the very near future. That's all I've got.
Did you play the convoy song?
We did.
I was going to ask, I was going to ask that, too. All the way back.
Oh, goodness.
Commissioner comments?
Oh, I got to sneak peek at you. I just happened to be out there yesterday, and one of them's parked out there, so you guys will be impressed. You'll be impressed. I enjoyed going to the Sheriff's Awards acknowledgment the other night, too. I think it's good that they, they do that, you know, and they recognize different people for paths that they have done over the year, you know. And at April 10, the Commissioners Convention at Manhattan, that went very well. And Dustin was talking this morning about all the AI training he's having to go to because of cyber issues and so forth. Well, that guy out there was giving the education, it wasn't on to bad things. His was supposed to be about all the good things. But you sit there listening to all the good things and realize how some of them can be really bad. I mean, it's like he tells the whole, they had one session on where they can punch in, let's say, I want a presentation on raising goats, you know, and I want it for Kansas, and I want it, you know, for training and educational, and within an hour, it comes back to him, and here's this big presentation and PowerPoint. Well, while he's asking that, it's looking at him, you know. So when it comes back, he uses his image and puts the words into the image, and it ain't him. I mean, it's his image, but that's what, you know, and then it's like Dustin kind of talking, he just gets trained on how to take care of one, and they've done, figured out how to go to the next level. So it's just, you know, mind blowing what, you know, it was really good. They brought up a lot of, they had the, our representation at KAC that goes on the South of the Peak, and they did a real good job going through and reviewing and everything. So fortunately, it sounded like maybe some of the things of water damage just didn't really get brought to the test, I guess, this year. So maybe we just need to buy them, we're sure, without, under duress. That's all I got.
Oh. Dad?
All right. A couple of weeks ago, I went to the KDOT County Commissioner meeting for District Four and got to see all the jobs, or them speak about all the jobs that KDOT will be doing in Franklin County. The only KDOT job for us is on 169 in just the very little corner of Franklin County. Also, that same day, the Ottawa campus of Neotsoe County Community College, their welding team won first place at the welding competition. And also, I have you all here, renewable energy is kind of a hot topic, and I have done a lot of research on it, and through that research, and for various reasons, I just don't feel that Franklin County is the right fit for industrial-scale commercial renewable energy, and was curious your guys' thoughts on a ban for that. Just throwing it out there. But I don't know.
I believe if we have thoughts to do that, we have to go through the planning board, and they have to have a special study session for that, and before it would come back to us for any other decisions.
Yeah, if there was interest from the county commissioners, you would need to direct staff to publish notice of a public hearing to have the planning commission consider, and they would need to amend the zoning regulations, they would need to amend the comprehensive plan to implement a ban on all commercial renewable energy effectively. So if there is interest, then we would need a, just direction, or it'd probably be better to have a motion to that effect.
And if we did send it back to the planning commission, then they would have plenty of opportunity for public comment, so people would have.
Yeah, there would be at least two, so you would have that public hearing that gets noticed up, we're all interested parties, and then, as you know, the planning commission merely makes recommendations, so there would be a second meeting with the Board of County Commissioners, and that is if there are no study sessions involved. So, yeah, there would be at least two opportunities for folks to comment.
I, a couple, I mean, we, we really did a lot of discussion on wind a couple of years ago and recently on industrial and commercial solar, and I would not be adverse to sending it to the planning commission for consideration of a ban in Franklin County.
Any input on that, Sam?
I'm not opposed. We do, do we have to go ahead and do a motion of the?
Oh, I need direction from a majority of you.
So he's waiting for everybody to?
Part of that process would be public impact comment and a big conversation. Definitely, I guess ban's a simple word, but there's a lot of area between taking large tracts of agriculture land and converting them to, you know, commercial energy production through renewables, which obviously is where a lot of the heartburn is, and there certainly seems to be a lot of, it seems like a majority of folks don't, don't want that for our community. And then on the other side of that spectrum. And then on the other side of that spectrum, there's, you know, private landowner wanting to put up solar panels, say, or on their roof, or in their yard for their business or home, and uh almost nobody's against that. Between those two points, there's uh a lot of detail, and that would, of course, it's a recommendation, the decision's ours, but that would uh have a chance to be flushed out, discussed, and details thought through, through that, with that process. I mean, at the planning commission, that's
And, and when we say commercial, I, I think, and Pat could correct me, I think it's commercial renewable energy conversion systems. That is not capturing the individual that wants to put solar panels on his house, or the company that wants to power, you know, something else, but uh
Well, that'd be commercial. I mean, but that's just my concern is, you know, at some point in there, uh, there's folks' rights, you, you know what I mean? And then what's completely reasonable, but nobody would object to, so just want to make sure that, I, I think that's something our department does excellent, is not stop folks from doing reasonable things with their own land. Um, not, not talking about renewables at all, just in day-to-day business. Been very good about not uh creating regulations or uh interpreting them in a way that just is zealous, so I'm very proud of them, and I appreciate them for that. Saves us a lot of heartache, and creates something we can be proud of, just to make sure we don't inadvertently do this um uh by creating a ban for something way over here. We don't want create hurdles and obstacles for reasonable, you know, folks who want to do something with the, something they own, right? Especially as that technology changes and may not at all resemble what we, you know, are objected to, or what it looks like today. Just don't want to create a, a verbiage or a, something like that. Does that make sense? So, and that'll all be flushed out, so.
Yeah, and I think as part of that discussion, and Pat and Dee and their team would, I, I guess, have discussions about how to approach that with the planning commission. Are, are these the things that we would like to ban? Are these the things that we would not? And then, as you've said, Cole, that gets fleshed out there. Ultimately, a recommendation comes up, um, and that's kind of how that would work.
Good.
Yeah.
I think uh you got the majority saying we need to look into it, for sure.
Okay, so I, I think to be a little cleaner, we just want a motion directing staff to publish notice of a public hearing to have the planning commission consider um amending the comp plan and the zoning regulations um to implement a ban on commercial uh renewable energy conversion systems, um with the understanding that that will specifically be fleshed out during that discussion, that term.
I would make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Metter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Harris.
Yes.
With our apologies to the planning commission, knowing this is going to be a lot more on their plate, um, but um appreciate their service to our community.
Do you hear a motion?
Yes, do you?
Me.
Oh, yeah, she has.
Can I?
Yeah.
I went to a couple of chamber coffees in the last two weeks. Uh, one was for Payne Financial Services, uh, the other one was Edward Jones celebrating fifty years. Um, the hospital board was last Thursday. They are truly looking uh forward to hopefully, I mean, two out of three, they got two out of three, so they are looking to start delivering babies again, um, hopefully by the end of the summer, so that's exciting. Um, the sheriff department awards, that was, you know, truly, it's not just, they're just not out there giving tickets, they're out there saving lives, and, and you kind of forget about, you know, they truly are important uh part of responding to all kinds of incidents, and you, you're like, oh, my gosh. Um, the KCCA conference last week, we talked about a lot of things, um, cybersecurity, AI, um, our health departments, uh, mental health centers, uh, we talked about the legislation that was passed or didn't pass in Topeka, um, this last uh session. Um, we had a lot of discussion on the servant, uh, on property tax, and you can't ever go and get a bunch of county commissioners together without talking about property taxes. And there are eighteen different services that the state requires the county to provide to the county, um, which takes up generally over half of our budget, and then the state says, you have to do it, but you, we're not going to help you pay for it. Um, and, and we're kind of trying to get that in the, in, you know, our state, like, they complain that we charge too much for property tax, but a lot of it is because of services that we're required to, including public health, emergency management, solid waste, law enforcement, jail, road and bridge, Knoxesweath, election, uh, tax collection, purpose, personal property tax collection, property registration, criminal prosecution, coroner, district court, mental health, blood control, praiser, all of it. Those are all things that the state says you have to do, but you have to pay for it. Um, and then, and another thing was that the, the state over the years has exempted forty-three billion dollars of real estate value, uh, and they keep increasing it every time somebody will go, well, I'm a this kind of company, and can we not be taxed? And they're like, okay. Well, every time they do that, that just shifts the burden on to the people that are still left, so there are some counties uh that have over forty percent of their property is tax exempt, um, which leaves a lot of burden on the rest of the, um, anyway, so always, it's a continuing discussion. And then the last thing, we get a newsletter every quarter, and uh this, in this quarter, the newsletter had an article in there that I had no idea that happened, um, that there was some cleanup out at the landfill, um, that was noticed that there was some trash that needed to be picked up, and so there was an invitation sent to department heads and employees, and they went out after um, after hours and picked up trash. Um, I, I'd like to have seen the invitation, you are invited to a barbecue at the landfill. I'm surely, hopefully, it was flushed out a little bit more than that, but um, you know, it's truly, it shows that our employees not only are paid by the county, but they're invested in the county, and, and if you see the pictures and, and realize that uh, that's just awesome, that we are, we can do that as county employees, um, because we care and appreciate all of our employees, so that's all I got.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.